PTAs for accommodating us there, those were always fun. And then I attended the PTA council lunch last Friday, which was great. The jazz band performed, the small chamber orchestra was there as well showcasing the talent of our, again, the music. Sorry, Mr. Ramirez, I just happened to, just happened to like the music. Nothing against the sports. And just to see the, we, the council honored some of the individuals who raised funds or coordinated the Baldwin for Children fundraising efforts, so that was great. That's it.
You're right, there were a lot of nice things that were going on in all of the schools in the last few weeks. I attended the art show at the high school and it was really an extraordinary display of tremendous talent. All different media were represented and it was, it was really an amazing program. I also stopped by the high school career day, which was very interesting. Not only did they have a terrific representation of colleges and universities, but a lot of very interesting niche technical schools that really I would think serve a very good purpose for, for students who perhaps are not necessarily interested in the traditional college route. I also attended Plaza's presentation of The Wizard of Oz. I was at the dress rehearsal because I know the, the regular performance is not until this weekend, but it was fantastic and it was fantastic. The kids did an absolutely great job for a dress rehearsal. It was pretty much flawless. And the other nice thing that I really have to give a shout out to, it was done in cooperation with a lot of the students that worked on the high school musical. If you recall, they did the Wiz, so they were able to share some of the sets, they were able to share their expertise with the younger kids. So it really was a very, very nice, a nice activity. And just want to give a shout out, there was a news article in Long Island Business talking about STEM education and they cited only a handful of schools on Long Island that have career academies that are extremely successful and of course, we were one of the four or five that were cited. That's it. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Okay. We normally take a break here for a first set of questions and comments from members of the audience. The hour is late, so I would ask please if you have something that you wish to ask or a comment you wish to make, but you keep it somewhat short so we can move forward with our business meeting. Yes?
It bears repeating, the cost per student for public education in Nassau County on average is $26,000, highest in the nation by a lot. In Baldwin, $23,000. Across the USA, $10,000 per student. And in Cupertino, California, where Steve Jobs was educated, home of Apple, the heart of Silicon Valley, the cost per student in Cupertino is $8,000, one-third what it costs in Baldwin. The difference is the cost of our administrators and educators whose salaries and benefits are off the charts. Locally, our Catholic schools send their students to Georgetown, Fordham, and Princeton at one-half our cost. The median teacher's salary in Cupertino is $60,000. In Baldwin, $110,000. Long Island has had its clock cleaned by the Teachers Association. You've made a terrible mistake in this padded budget, allowing a 2.3% raise for our administrators while allowing cuts to equipment and supplies for all our schools. The message should be no mas, no more raises, not next year, not next decade. As to the teachers, the over/under is $90,000. Allow the teachers under $90,000 their steps. Let them make up the missteps. But for those over $90,000 base salary, no mas. There will never be another raise. If they insist on their tri-borough steps, if they insist on their mandated raises, let them know unequivocally, the hikes will come out of the salaries of their fellow educators. It should be a zero-sum game. Salary hikes will come from savings like replacing retired $125,000 teachers or will come from laid-off colleagues who won't collect one cent of unemployment benefits because we'll offer them back a job as an assistant teacher with a $60,000 pay cut. Our schools are in the bottom quartile of Nassau County. We also need more work from our students, teachers, and administrators. We need a 200-day school year. 180 is a minimum, not the maximum. We can do 200 between September and June. In Germany, the students have only six weeks off during the summer. Leveing more taxes is not the answer. You'll run a $4 million surplus this year, just as you've averaged a $4 million operational surplus the last four years. You have all the money you need to run next year's program, but you'll never have enough money to satisfy your administrators and teachers, no matter how overpaid they are. Leveing more taxes is not the answer. Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening. Lori Fitzpatrick, 2284 Rockwood Avenue, Baldwin. First, I just want to thank you because as you all know, this is my favorite Board of Ed meeting ever in the whole year, when we get to listen to the accomplishments of these incredible students that we have. My daughter was honored a few years ago in this spot and it's just amazing that these kids accomplish what they do and the incredible schools that these children are attending college next year. The Ivy Leagues are just unbelievable with the scholarships that they get, so thank you to the board for that. Now, about the bomb threats up at the high school. I have a high schooler who's up there. This was the third one in a week and a half. My concern, not only that they happen and that the kids are put on bleachers where if a bomb actually does go off, they're on bleachers, but being that these warnings or threats are found on bathroom walls, can we maybe post monitors outside the bathrooms that they can, children can sign in and sign out, so maybe we can narrow this down? I mean, the clear bags are great, you know, safety measures, whatever we have to do, but maybe we can get it right where it happens, right at the door of the bathrooms. I volunteer to do it. You know, I know the teachers, I know everybody's busy, but this is, you know, this is crazy. This is coming down the last few weeks. The kids need to study, they need to get that last, you know, instruction in. They can't be sitting on the bleachers like this or out, you know, if they're out for lunch, they can't be wandering Baldwin. So maybe that's, you know, something we can think about. Thank you.
We actually do have that procedure and we're just, and we may have to make some minor adjustments to it because right now, we don't have every single bathroom covered because frankly, with the last couple of years, with some of the accessing that has taken place, we don't have as many people to assign duty posts to. So at this point in time, we're looking at tweaking some of the available bathrooms, but by and large, we do know who's going to the bathroom and when.
Good evening. Tricia Wilder, 655 St. Luke's Place. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Parrotts at the high school. As Mrs. O'Hagan mentioned, we were able to share the set design from the Wiz and Mr. Parrotts was instrumental in getting that to us at Plaza School. He arranged a field trip on Monday and Tuesday so that we had the crew from the high school working with us at the elementary school level and it was able to teach some of our younger students how to do that, so when they get here, they'll be able, you know, to be on that committee. And it just, it was, made me proud to be a resident of Baldwin, to see how we were working together. And on behalf of the children, I just want to thank Mr. Skinnell and Mrs. O'Hagan for coming to the dress rehearsals and in advance, thank Mr. Press and Mr. Harrison because I know you both are coming on Saturday night. And they love when the important people, as they call you, come to the show to see them, so I thank you very much on their behalf. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Christina Lozada, 42 Pine Street. I would like to talk today about the issue of New York State field testing and I'm sure most of you know, that's when additional ELA and math assessments are sent from the state and contain test questions that are put together by private companies with the purpose of trying out questions for future exams. So yet again, valuable classroom instruction must be put on hold for the sake of another test. But this time, the purpose of the test is not to improve student achievement, or to measure student achievement rather, but to have our students provide research for companies like Pearson's with no compensation for the school district for rendering these services. Also, to make matters worse, all you have to do is see the actual state test to see that the field testing is not really working. The goal of creating questions that are, where the bad questions get filtered out is not actually happening. As a special ed teacher in Mineola, I gave the state tests in fourth grade and on the particular form of the ELA that my students took, session one, there were six questions that I could not be 100% sure of the exact correctness of. That should not be happening. Also, in my job as a special ed teacher, I gave the math assessment and on the final day of that assessment, session three, one-third of my class was in tears or near tears because of the difficulty of the test and the inappropriateness of it for them. And I'm sure that there are some similar students like that in Baldwin. And I do not think, in my mind, it's actually unconscionable to put our most vulnerable students through that experience for the sake of providing research to a private company. So what I'm suggesting from Mr. Skinnell and the board is to consider taking the action the superintendent of PSYOSIT has taken. On the PSYOSIT Central School District Facebook page, Ron Freeman, the superintendent of schools, writes, "I told our principals to take the cardons of field tests they get, mark them with black magic markers, return refused, and send them back unopened." He went on to say, "We've spent more than enough time and energy and angst on testing this year. Can Baldwin join PSYOSIT in taking this brave stand against field testing, but more importantly, taking a stand for good things like spending our remaining instructional time on instruction?" Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Perez, 1690 Westerveld Avenue. I would like to just make a few comments about the possible adoption of the full Engage New York modules for ELA, which at this point, I understand, were fairly flexible, but from what I understand now, the district is considering making them mandatory for next year. I know that there have been some rumors that, oh, kids who use these modules get higher test scores. I'm not really sure what that means. I guess it makes them into good little test takers, if that's what you want. I mean, I've never had a job interview where they've asked me about my ability to bubble in questions. Just as a reminder, these are not teacher-tested lessons. They're highly scripted lessons and they were just made by Pearson. And the, it's kind of frightening that the creators of the achievement tests that hold the teachers accountable for the content also get to create the lessons and the prep materials and everything that comes along with that. It's also a highly scripted program that in a lot of ways is a little bit over the top as far as time and tasks go. There is a module in ninth grade where they have to read the same short story 17 times over 17 days. You know, and with 180 lessons for 180 days of school, you don't really have a lot of time to go outside of the box on any of this. And my caucus with the UFT has done some anecdotal work on trying to find out what happens when we use these modules. And one thing that came out of this is that when you're reading something for 17 days, the first day, the kids are excited to start a new lesson, especially if the story seems like something interesting. By the third day, they're kind of bored by reading and discussing the same story for three days straight and they're kind of starting to get antsy. By the sixth day, they're outwardly hostile to the lessons and the teacher for teaching the lessons. By the ninth day, they're totally disengaged from class and talk openly about how much they hate English. By the 12th day, they no longer give a crap about anything. That was the posters, no, not mine. Not the class, not the story, not the teacher, not the assessment, which is test for when you and I went to school, that's coming up on day 17. And by the 17th day, they complete the assessment with little regard to how they do on it because they stopped caring somewhere around day five. That's what we deal with. We're also told as teachers not to give any context. In fifth grade, students are asked to read the Declaration of the United Nations on Human Rights with no context, only to notice how the document is laid out with no thought to the purpose, content, or reason for it, or the audience. So I would just urge you to reconsider that and give the teachers the autonomy that has done so well for my older kids that I think my youngest child also deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Hagan, the only thing I would have to say is there's really not a lot to reconsider because we're not adopting the Engage New York ELA standards as a whole, no. Where we've been led by Dr. Seniak and Ms. Connolly, we've been doing a lot of our own writing in this area over the last couple of years and have approved some additional writing to take place this summer, so we're doing a lot.
Thank you.
Hello. David Welsh. I live here in Baldwin. I want to talk about the bombings again, sorry, or the threats, I should say. And hopefully, they haven't become bombings. I'm curious, these are all written down on the bathroom walls or someplace? None of these have been phone called in? You've, there've been a lot of them over the course of the year.
We've had three over the course of this year.
Three, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, that's still three.
Yes, it is. It's more than we would like to have.
Yes. How serious is the school taking this? Because if the school administration, the school does not take it that seriously, oh, it's just a prank, then the police will not take it seriously either.
I don't know why someone would think that we're not taking it seriously. We've been taking it tremendously seriously. We've evacuated the building, we've gone through search procedures, we've gone through preclearance procedures. Both times that we evacuated the building, we had a significant police presence, including the commissioner and the deputy, not the commissioner, the deputy inspector and the inspector of the first precinct. We've debriefed afterwards. I have an appointment with Inspector Flannigan next week to do some additional debriefing. No one should make an assumption that we're taking, not taking it seriously.
Do you have a reward system set up?
Do I have a reward system?
Yeah, I can contribute $100 towards it, believe me. With kids in high school, money, money is it, okay? Anything that goes towards the conviction and incarceration or whatever happens, the arrest and conviction of whoever's doing this, it's money well spent. Maybe you send a message. Do you have a reward system?
No, we don't have a reward system set up. We're investigating it seriously and I'm confident that we'll...
You'll find the guy who's going to do it? Someone's just going to come around and say, "He did it." Okay.
Okay. We'll resume our regular business meeting. Let's see. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report dated May 14, 2014, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Because this involves the name of individual staff members, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, SubCSE, 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in December 2013 and January, February, March, and April 2014, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Because this involves the name of individual children, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Because this also involves the names of students, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education brings back a tabled item and approves the transportation contract renewal with Baumann Bus Company for the 2014-2015 school year at CPI. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What will be the increase on that? What was it?
Yeah, I had sent home a bunch of backup in the Friday mailing. We still do not have the exact CPI. We originally expected it to be between 1.4 and 1.8%. Looks like it's going to be closer to 2%. So in the backup on Friday, I sent the board information about what 2% more would be with the Baumann Bus Company and if you, I'll go through what I had sent you and...
This is it, isn't it?
Yes, so Baumann would go, it would be, it's about $57,000 more than we're paying this year. And then you'll, there are a number of other contracts later on, but it's Baumann, if, and we have to recognize that this is an estimate because of course, the roots could change a little bit next year, but we spend about $2,820,000 with Baumann, $2,820,000 with Baumann this year. It would go up to about $2,877,000, so it's about a $57,000 difference.
Was there any reason for the increase?
It's the CPI. It's, so that's the, the transportation CPI, so that's the accepted value of how much inflation is affecting transportation costs. And typically, the CPI works out favorably to us. If you open the contract for bid, it would most likely come back above the CPI. In 2011, we did open the Atlantic bid because we wanted to test the waters and all of the responses we got were higher than the CPI, so we reverted back to just extending the contract at the CPI.
Okay. And then next year, we'll...
You'd have the choice again.
We'll do all over again.
Well, you'd have the choice.
Do we have a choice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The Board of Education approves the budget transfers over $10,000 from January 15 through April 24, 2014, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I, I just had a question. So just so everybody knows what we're looking at, it's, it's transfers over $10,000. And for, say, let's just take security, with $25,000 through April 24, does that mean we're going to get another one of these for April 25 through June 26?
Well, it goes there. I wouldn't guarantee that you would get another one that will deal with Summit Security, but because we did make adjustments to the Summit Security patrols to reduce this. But the other thing to recall is although it is a transfer into Summit Security, it is an amount of money that was in the security.
Security budget.
So it was just a shift to the part that pays Summit. But we, as we said, we decreased the nighttime patrol, we decreased the weekend patrol, and we rearranged the, the staffing at the high school to reduce these costs.
Right. Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is, will these transfers cover us through the end of the year? Or, no, they won't. They only cover us from April 24.
It takes us through the 24th, but that doesn't necessarily mean that Summit would show up.
Right. But the cost of the charter school tuition, that'll be another...
No, because those bills we're getting now, so we know.
Okay.
And we had about five additional charter school students and then that line also covers foster care, so we had the bills coming in for the students that we have to pay for that are in foster care, coming in a little bit higher than originally budgeted.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Cover costs for survey from Millburn, Chubert into the district office?
Yes.
I thought we paid for that last year.
No, this was a survey as, associated with the offering for lease and sale.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't for the appraiser?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question on the transportation contract? You said there were costs that were coming in more than expected. Could you just explain what costs are coming in?
The overall cost for transportation, the, the number of buses that are on the road to service the kids, although we have a good number fewer kids coming in, it hasn't resulted in as many fewer buses as we originally thought.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the general supplies bid number 001, 2014-2015 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
I do. At, at the last board meeting, a couple of people stood up and complained that we didn't give enough information in these, in this part of the agenda. So I don't know if anyone here wanted to hear, but I went through and just eyeballed the numbers and rounded them and it's not an exact number, but an estimate of what that amount is for each one. Do you want me to say what? The, the person who was really interested isn't here, but...
Is anyone here?
Does anybody want to know the amounts of these bids? I have it. Yes? Okay. So 406 items were sent out, five were vendors qualified, for a total of $16,000. Is that right?
I'm, I'm sorry, you added all of those together?
Yeah, I added these together. Roughly. I rounded up or down.
Right. And as you pointed out at that meeting, anybody who went online on Monday would have been able to see exactly what you're reading.
Well...
Or when did it go? Oh, okay.
Okay. Aye.
Okay. And I've lost my... All those in favor? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education awards the athletic supplies bid number 003, 2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions?
I'll just make it brief and say that there were 11 vendors qualified and it was a total of approximately $21,000.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the athletic uniforms bid number 005, 2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions?
Two, two qualified for bid awards a total of about $3,800.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education awards the art supplies bid number 010, 2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I'm just going to say the total amount, approximately $27,000.
All those in favor?
Some of them.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the health and trainer supplies bid number 012, 2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
A total of approximately $5,500.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the physical education supplies bid number 013, 2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
And this total was approximately seven thousand dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education awards the music supplies bid 016-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
No.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harrison. Are there any questions?
Uh, no, I would like, what number are we on?
Nine.
Okay. The approximate amount is forty-six hundred dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the cooperative ceiling tile installation bid 2014-15 to all state enterprises and JP Daly and Sons, Inc., the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
This was a lot of pages and a little bit confusing, so Mr. Scannell's gonna explain this one.
Yeah, what this, what this bid is, is not an actual commitment to make a purchase because, um, we don't know if we're going to need these and how many. So, this is a bid to basically get an à la carte list of prices that we would pay if we need ceiling tiles. So, it's pages of, um, if you need ceiling tiles that are up on number twelve wire, you would pay a certain rate, and these are based on the bid, the lowest responsible price. If you need ceiling tiles that are on one and one-half inch rods, there's a list of prices that you would pay, but we, this, this is, we're just accepting that we, we agree to purchase off here if we need them.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the cooperative roof repair bid 2014-15 to statewide roofing, the lowest responsible bidder, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, last year, I opposed this, uh, this, uh, budget, okay, because I was unaware, because my question was to the administration that why would we pay an hourly rate for roofs, uh, where we could get one set price? And I ran into Mr. Russ Rambeau in charge of grounds today, and he explained to me that this hourly cost is for maybe a hole or a large hole, not the entire roof.
Right, and again, it's not a commitment. This is just an agreement that we could use this contractor, and this represents the lowest price if we needed to repair a hole. Uh, yeah, and certainly, if we were going to do capital work, um, to replace a section of a roof, we would bid that as a job.
Over thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we would bid that and bid it as a job for that whole job, not an hourly rate.
Right, and that would be over thirty thousand, correct?
Um, yeah, I think, because the cost, I, it's thirty thousand, I thought the threshold was lower than that, but we would have to bid it.
Okay, now, um, this is on the top. Okay, so...
Can you repeat what you're mentioning?
No. But anyway, um, okay, but he explained to me in detail. Again, last year, I opposed it because I just didn't understand why he would, you know, uh, bid our work per hour.
Right.
And I even asked the administration last year, um, why don't we just get one flat rate for roof repair? So, now I understand this, this, if we have a damage, it's a consortium, correct?
Yeah, exactly. And, and so we agreed to belong to this cooperative, so that if we needed something for hourly, we needed someone to come and quick fix something.
Right.
Um, we, we've already got in advance knowledge of what the cheapest place to go to is to get that service.
Got you. Thank you. I just wish that would've been explained to me in more detail, uh, last year, you know, now I understand.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the recommendation for the ACA consultant as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I have another question. What is the cost for this consultant?
Our best estimate right now, based on having the range of between seven hundred and fifty and one thousand full-time equivalent employees, that for the first year, it would be approximately one thousand dollars a month, and then if we needed them in subsequent years, it would be five hundred dollars a month, although we don't really anticipate that once they get us set up, that we would need it more than the first year.
Okay, now, thank you. So, it's, it's about, what, four thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
Thank you.
But just for the first year.
Correct.
It would go down if we used them a second year.
Right, got you.
But we don't anticipate needing it.
So, they're gonna help us ensure that we comply?
And, and sure that we comply, help us figure out who needs what, and also let us make kind of a cost benefit analysis, uh, because there are some places that are recognizing, um, that what, what would be the liability of not complying with certain groups of individuals what, you know?
And for anyone who's interested, I think it should be online. There's, um, a whole document on the Affordable Care Act on the district webpage, and a survival guide for employers that has a lot of Q and As and gives you information, and you can, when you read through that, you can see why we, in my opinion, we really do need a consultant to help us navigate this, at least at the outset, to figure out how we can comply with this law.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the joint municipal cooperative bidding program and cross-contract for BOSI services as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Um, the estimate, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
I just gonna say the estimated cost is, uh, five hundred dollars.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Board of Education approves the letter of intent and agreement from Tel Logic, Inc., Textbook Central for the 2014-2015 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions?
No questions, but I did want to, um, just let the people here know that for, um, up to twenty-five students, it's twenty-five dollars sixty cents per student, up to two-hundred-and-fifty students, it's twenty-one dollars and twenty cents, and over two-hundred-and-fifty students, it's fifteen dollars and ninety cents per student. And if you can explain to me then why the, why the...
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, yeah, it's more than that, it's, it's...
Yeah, what happens, what, we, we, we use this program because the students who attend private parochial school by law are allowed to get their textbooks furnished by the school district. So, what happens is, we have, you know, fifty kids, let's say, that go to St. Chris, but then three kids that go to Luhai, and five kids that go to St. Anthony's or something like that, and what happens is they each need textbooks based on what that particular private or parochial school is asking for, and they're entitled to get. So, what happens, though, is in terms of trying to supply these textbooks, we wind up with needing a few numbers of books for a lot of different titles. So, we lose our purchasing power, um, because we might just need three of this particular biology book, or ten of this particular fifth grade reader. So, what happens is by belonging to the textbook loan program, what happens is they gather together then the, the private parochial needs of a number of school districts and recapture that purchasing power. The other thing is, um, it makes it easier for us to manage it because we're not going out and trying to buy ourselves three of those, five of these, two of these. This company handles that. And then the last thing is, um, the private parochial schools, because they can, tend to change their titles more frequently. So, you're kind of regularly dealing then with new stock, um, so by, um, going with a loan program, it saves us money because we recapture that, um, purchasing power.
Plus, we don't have to store them.
Um, no, we do store a certain amount of books in, in, in our location, but, uh, it's not as many.
Okay.
And it certainly means that, you know, the books that are not being used don't have to stay around.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the health and welfare services contracts for twenty-two pupils in three schools in the Garden City Union Free School District for 2013-14 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Uh, the approximate total is seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the consultant agreement for Nancy Nunziata, pupil transportation consultant for the 2014-2015 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Um, the cost for this is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
I don't know if you want to explain more about why we have a consultant for this?
Yes, 'cause, of course, we also have a transportation employee, but one of the things that we do as a district in order to try to save money on our transportation costs is we belong to something called the Southwest Consortium. Again, that's about putting out a bid that is designed to increase our purchasing power by being, um, going out and buying more in bulk, I suppose, by joining up with addition, other school districts. It also, um, gives us the ability then to try to share routes between schools, um, and in fact, that's largely what this consultant does for the Southwest Consortium, and each school district in that consortium pays a portion of, um, that consulting contract, and this individual puts the bid specs together based on what each of the schools say they need, and then this person also then coordinates the efforts of the districts to try to give shared routes. So, this way, if we've got a, a bus who's traveling from one town through another town, um, that, you know, maybe we can get them to pick up kids to go to, you know, Trinity or something like that, so we can share that bus. So, that's what this consultant does, is coordinates the efforts of the Southwest Consortium.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the self-funded dental agreement with Fitz Harrison Company for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Any questions or comments?
Uh, no increase to the monthly fees?
I don't believe so.
Right, that's what, no, that's true.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with Dent Care Delivery Systems, Inc., through Fitz Harrison Company for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
And the current rates will remain unchanged for the next one.
I did have an additional question, you know? So, Dent Care is not an investigated company, uh, and so you're, you're saying that Fitz Harrison recommends them. What's the, is, does it matter? Is there an impact that they are not investigated?
No. No. No, no impact at all, really. I don't know. I don't know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the transportation contract renewals for veterans, we transport, first student, suburban, and actmate for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
We, we already discussed this, is the increase in accordance with the CPI, right?
Correct, the transportation CPI.
Right, the transportation CPI.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the school physician contract with Dr. Cole Connolly for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I have a comment.
I did, okay.
This is just addressed to our former superintendent, but, uh...
Ooh, my bunch.
Okay, so we'll just put your name in, okay, Jim?
Yes, sir.
But that was it.
It's, it's just a memo introducing it, yeah.
Okay.
I, I actually had a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Um, how, how long has she been the district physician?
Um, a number of years. Not for the entire time that I've been affiliated with the district, but certainly for the last six or seven years, I believe.
And, um, do you know the last time an RFP went out? I know they don't have to go out for professional services, but for the school physician?
So, I, I don't know, but I can find that out for you.
Okay. And so, everybody knows her contract is, uh, four, am I right, forty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, yeah, please come down from the head of it.
And those rates are unchanged?
Correct.
Oh, right. Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract with Therapy Source, Inc., to provide related services for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Um, these rates range between fifty and a hundred and eight dollars per hour, and it is not an increase over the current school year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending the Development Disabilities Institute Private Residential School in the amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred and seven dollars for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for two students attending the Brookville Center for Children's Services, Inc., private residential school in the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars each for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending the Millneck Manor Private Residential School in the amount of seventy-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract with Dr. Carol Oris to provide psychiatric evaluations for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, I'll just comment that she, her rate, which remains unchanged from this year's, three hundred dollars per psychiatric evaluation, and three hundred dollars per hour if she attends a CSE. Again, no increase.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves a maxi grant in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Baldwin Foundation for Education, and approves both revenue and expense increases in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget for the following. Title of the grant is Ed Mark Reading Program. The teacher is Kimberly DeMarco at Meadow School, in the amount of five hundred dollars. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, to the BFE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of an outdoor P A system valued at one hundred and fifty dollars from Mr. Mel Brenner, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Brenner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves three five hundred dollar scholarships from Northside Church for senior students meeting the criteria, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you to the Northside Church. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board of Education approves certificate awards from the United States Navy for three senior students, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education declares obsolete sixty vinyl records, and seven hundred and fifty-three books that are no longer useful to the school library for state rules and regulation, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any comments or questions? Are they antiques? I don't know. I, I guess you could. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the use of facilities for May two thousand fourteen through June two thousand fourteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Robori. Seconded by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Is that involvement with J C C?
What you just voted on, no?
No.
Or what's before you, rather, you didn't vote on it. Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
I'm the next one.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Board, the Board of Education authorizes Baldwin Parents in Partnership for School Age Child Care, Inc., to continue in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, to use district facilities, as identified by the district, in consultation with the service providers, for the purpose of conducting an after-school childcare program, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I have a question. Yeah, um, are we going to receive any rent, additional rent? This is through J C C, they don't pay us rent, correct?
Right, we don't charge them rent, because they provide a, a reduced price service to our residents, um, for pre, before-school care and after-school care. So we, we kind of view it as a, as a, a service that's provided to the, the parents, you know, it's, it's a convenience, and that we don't provide ourselves.
And they want to use, uh, more facility, which is, which are two more, correct?
Well, they, they're, they currently use Plaza after-school.
Right.
And Meadow before-school and after-school.
Mm-hmm. And one for karate classes and so forth.
Right, but the karate class, I don't believe, is here. They did the karate, they, they take the kids down to the, the J C C center for, um, the swimming, and, um.
Right.
I don't think they run the karate class on premises.
They enrolled them in the last competition. This year, they added a karat, in addition, they, this year, they added a karate class to incorporate more.
Right, but they didn't do that on-site. They just, that was an option that, that the parents would have to enroll their children in, that they pay an extra fee for the karate class, it doesn't take place on our premises.
Okay.
Um, and the same thing for the swimming lessons, it doesn't take place on our premises.
Oh, okay, because we don't have any pool.
Right, they go down to the Oceanside J C C, and they, um, but what happens is that J C C will transport them from our school to, um, the, the pool in Oceanside.
Okay, got you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the list of additional registrars, assistant clerks, and/or inspectors for the annual school and library budget vote and board member election, to be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that upon reviewing the decision of the Superintendent of Schools made on March nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and the appeal letter dated April seventh, two thousand fourteen, the decision of the Superintendent of Schools in the matter of A, T, is hereby sustained in all respects. Moved by Mr. Press?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and the last, uh, item before other, uh, is a board discussion. The Board of Education will discuss the following: participation in a community coalition and anti-graffiti project.
Okay, I know it's late, so I will make it brief, but a few board meetings ago, it was discussed that the district would get involved with a community coalition to address issues in the community and build pride. And we had our first meeting last week at the library, there were representatives from many groups, the Chamber of Commerce, the B C A, the Baldwin Oaks, the P T A Legislative Council, the School Board, uh, Sunny Two, and, and someone from the community, Judge McGinnity. And, um, we talked about long-term things, like, of course, revitalizing Grand Avenue, and maybe getting some left-turn lanes in on Grand Avenue. But this group decided to focus on something that maybe we could, um, conquer, and that is graffiti in the town. I don't know if anyone's noticed, because I hadn't, but apparently there's been an uptick in graffiti around town. And, um, so I, we need to discuss whether the school wants to work on tackling this issue with the coalition, which, which I'd be in favor of, because, um, you know, obviously, maybe our students involved in it. And one thing that they would like is for the police to, um, pass along some of the tags to the administration at each building, um, not to show to the kids, not to get the, the kids involved, because you sort of don't want to give whoever's doing it the notoriety. But administrators or teachers might recognize it as something the kid is doodling on a notebook or somewhere else, and, um, help put a stop to it. So we talked about, um, whether the school district would be amenable to that, and participating. And we, we did talk about, you know, having sort of a program for the younger kids about not doing graffiti and having pride in your community. I don't know if those programs are effective or not, um, but I thought the least we could do would be cooperate on that level, and also to maybe put on the website that if people see graffiti, what they actually need to do is not to call the first precinct, is that right? But to call nine-one-one, because apparently now you're supposed to call nine-one-one for everything, not just emergencies. And as soon as you see graffiti, um, to call nine-one-one, and if you can take a picture, take a picture, that'd be great, and, uh, I don't know, can you text the police? I don't really know. But have a picture, because the police will come out and take a complaint from you, and, um, they hope to track down whoever's doing it. Apparently, there's someone who's tagging a lot around town, and then there's someone who's going around with pink spray paint, bright pink, and spray painting over those tags, which apparently looks horrible. I haven't seen it, I think it's mostly in the south, but, yeah.
Any reason why we wouldn't?
No, in fact, we received, um, it, it was a coincidence today, because, uh, I'd had the chance to speak a little bit with Ms. Robori about it, um, we received a direct inquiry from a representative of the group, um, asking us to participate, um, in the piece that's, yeah.
What? The podcast?
Sorry, um, that, asking us to participate, in particular with the idea that as they take some pictures, could they share them with us, so that we could see if we recognize them?
Right.
And we'll absolutely cooperate with that.
And I should say, we, we did have a follow-up meeting, where there was a police officer there who's made it pretty clear to us that we should not share it with the student body, because then we're just giving whoever's doing it the, yeah, the attention that they apparently seek in the first place.
My question is, how do you have a program on not to do graffiti?
It's just, I think, on like pride in your community, and not littering, and keeping things clean. I, we would, we don't have to do, I don't know how effective those programs are, but the, that's one thing that was discussed.
But a program on not to do graffiti?
Yeah.
I don't know. What are you, what are you doing in the program?
You say, I, I don't, I don't know, but apparently they have programs out there to, sort of beautification programs and keeping things clean. And there is like a lot of litter around town, but we're not addressing litter right now, just graffiti. And I think the big sweep is coming up too, right?
It is.
Saturday, yeah, which, um, this coalition will also be talking about graffiti, and if you see it, call nine-one-one. Okay. Good. Okay, did I say, maybe we could put something on the website to, that if you see graffiti,